Thank you. Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to May. We're getting closer and closer. Is that a little better? I'd like to start tonight with our exemplary people. I'll turn it over to Joe.
Absolutely. I'd like to ask Dylan Pinto and Chris Tierney to come up, and actually Mr. Lowell as well. I'm really excited to introduce Mr. Lowell, who's going to talk a little bit about our two exemplary people, Dylan Pinto and Christopher Tierney. With their grant funds, the state of Connecticut promoted civic engagement with high schools throughout the state with their Voice for Change program. Basically, students could earn significant funds for their schools by developing a program that they thought would benefit the entire student body. Upon completion of their proposals, students at each high school would vote for their favorite program. So technically, you should get one grant per school throughout the entire state. I'll let Ian talk a little bit about the two proposals and how Massey was actually awarded two winners in this program.
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, so the Voice for Change program basically was a first-of-its-kind initiative. The state set aside $1.5 million of ESER grant money for high schools. And they put it out to students. They said, whatever students feel like they need in their schools, they should be able to apply for. But it wasn't an easy process. They had to create a line item budget. You know, just like we're voting on tomorrow, they had to create, you know, a smaller version, of course, but a line item budget for every single thing that was going to be incorporated into their plans. And so needless to say, not every student who had an idea ended up bringing it all the way full to proposal, but two students did. Chris's program was called Muscles for Massey, and I'll let Chris tell you a little bit about his program.
Hi, everyone. So yeah, I did Muscles for Massey. It was a way for me to reach out to the school and decide, you know, I reached out to people, I'm the junior class president, and I wanted to reach out to my peers and say, hey, guys, what do you think would best benefit as many people as possible in our school? And after talking to a bunch of people over a week or so, I really decided that the weight room would benefit the most amount of people, the athletic program, you know, gym classes go in there. And it hasn't seen a lot of improvements in the last, you know, at least since I've been at Massey. So we so we decided that, you know, I created the itemized list, and I think that people really responded well to it. So yeah, it was a great experience for me.
And so Chris's proposal for Muscles for Massey was put on the ballot and actually won the student vote, and so was selected as a student vote. The other really important proposal that was put forth was by Dylan, and that was to get the Wingman program through the Sandy Hook, you know, Mr. Hockley from the Sandy Hook connection. Wanted to make sure that that program got off the ground here at Massey. And, you know, several hundred students voted for that program as well, and I'll let Dylan tell you a little bit more about the Wingman program.
Hi. So the Wingman program was one of five proposals throughout the state that won the Commissioner's Choice Award. So Massey won, obviously, two proposals. So the Wingman program is a youth leadership program that's peer-led, and it promotes courage, inclusion, and empathy throughout schools, sports teams, clubs, and even corporate offices and companies. So obviously, we would use it as a school-wide approach, and it would enable peers to have a leadership position. And not only will it give, like, everyone the opportunity to be a leader, including people who don't typically get leadership roles, but also people from a diverse group in the high school, so that everyone can make sure they're represented. And I think it's a really cool program that I've been involved with for a while. And it was founded after the Sandy Hook shooting in honor of Dylan Hockley, who always needed a wingman. And so the logo is actually a butterfly, because he would always flap his wings. And he would tell his mom that he was like a beautiful butterfly. And that's also why his favorite color is purple, so that's in the logo, too. So I thought it was a really cool thing to bring to Massey, because I know a lot of the core values here are in line with that program as well.
So, you know, over 50% of students at Massey are on an athletic team. And so obviously, the weight room is going to get a lot of work. Students have lost a lot of great leadership opportunities because of COVID. You know, nobody's fault there, but, you know, reality is, a lot of leadership opportunities have been put on pause. And so getting the Wingman program in is going to really open up leadership opportunities and hopefully really foster a really strong school culture where upperclassmen, kids can get trained in leadership and then be able to pass that on, you know, kind of generation, class to class. So I can't say enough about the work that these two students did. I'm very proud of everything they put together. You know, teachers and folks in the school system maybe has supported a little bit, but really, it was their initiative that put this on the ground. So kudos to them.
First, congratulations. That's amazing. It's awesome. So did Massey get two out of five in total for the state?
There were 73, I want to say, proposals totally granted. There were I think there were 150 proposals that were put forward. The proposals had to meet one of or more of the criteria of the ESER grant funding, which kind of ranged different protocols. So both of these programs were accepted to run. Only five schools got two programs. There were every school that put forth a proposal that was accepted got at least one of those programs. Some schools only had one program, therefore it won. Some schools had as many as 10 or 12. They got one winner. Massey was one of five schools that got two winners.
They got two winners. And when do the grants come and, like, the weight room and the projects, and the Wingman, very important Wingman projects begin?
That's a great question. We don't have the answer to that yet. They have told us they will be in contact with us.
The check is in the mail, really?
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, Dylan, you know, Dylan is an integral part of the Wingman program as well. She's the social media campaign director, is that true? And works directly with the founder of the Wingman program. And so, you know, Ian Hockley has already talked to us about being able to give us an opportunity to get boots on the ground and get moving quickly with the program, even in this year, even though the check is not yet here.
That's awesome.
And as far as the weight room, we're hoping that it comes in the summer, so we can get everything in and ready to go.
What are the changes in the weight room, Chris?
So we are adding four squat racks, a air conditioning unit. It's not going to be connected through the ceiling, but it's just going to be, like, on the floor.
Like an electric plug-in B.C. thing?
Yeah. So we're going to have two of those. We're going to have 23 new pairs of, like, weights. And then, yeah, no, we're going to have Well, no, we're going to have 15 pairs of those and a new rack. And then we're just going to have, like, bumper plates, 23 pairs of those. We're going to have two lateral towers. We're going to have, I think it's seven hex bars. And those are the things I can think of off the top of my head, but
Is there kind of
Oh, there are medicine balls, yeah. A bunch of medicine balls. So, yeah.
So Mr. Bob is not getting his weights back?
So all those things, like, there's kind of, there's not really enough weights, really?
It's either that they are really poor quality or that there just aren't enough for the amount of people that are in there at once. So we're replacing, like, there were probably five medicine balls, but they were just poor quality to begin with. So that was a big thing that, I was talking to Mr. Scarpatti, who helped me create the list of items that we were going to put into the weight room. And he really wanted to have those, so he helped me out create that list. And so, you know, I was just trying to do as many things that as many people would appreciate in there.
Did you guys fill out, like, a grant application form?
Yeah.
That's like, that's really cool. That's really good. You could use that in the future, too, but that's great for us.
Ian, was it 20,000 each?
It is. It's 20,000 for each program.
Okay. So you'll join me. Congratulations.
I do want to, I know he's a very humble man, but I know Mr. Lowell is, come on, I'm going to take a quick picture. Mr. Lowell is underscoring the work that he did to get this stuff off the ground. So thank you to Ian for that. Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you.
Good job.
I was not filling out grant applications, but I think
I know. It's really good. We're proud of both of you. Thank you. Chris and Dylan, you don't have to say for the rest of the meeting. Is that what, Mr. Swenson just whispered in your ear? It's a requirement. You have to say till the end. No, we're just kidding. Thank you very much, but you can leave when you'd like. We're going to move on to public participation. Is there anyone for public participation? No one for public participation? Okay. I'm going to take it and run. Report of the chairman. First of all, it is, I'm sorry. Nope, you're right. Report of the chairman. First of all, it is Teacher Appreciation Week, so I want to make it very clear to all of our staff, certified staff, teachers, thank you very, very much for all the hard work that you do every day, and we truly appreciate it. So thank you, teachers. The other update I have for the board is we have reached a tentative agreement with the Paris Union. That's going to go to them for ratification, and then it'll come to us for a vote. So we're happy that we were able to work together to get that done. The nurse's contract remains, but that's going very well. Lastly, I don't want to get into a full-blown discussion, continued discussion over it, but I did want to, in public, close out our discussion on the food service update. So Joe and Ron spoke with the state, because it is regulated by the state and Department of Agriculture. And the state said that we put out the RFP. There are companies interested. It's in place. The walkthrough is done. And the best thing we can do right now is to let that process run, accept, you know, bids and go into contract. And then at the end of the first year, we can reevaluate that. The contract per the Department of Agriculture is one year with four one-year renewals. So we have to be careful about what we say in public, because it is a legal contract that we've started the process for. So it was a great discussion, and I think we do need to keep, always keep eye on quality and service all the time. So we'll look for that feedback, but I just wanted to follow up with that, with those things. So we shall move on to the consent agenda. Number one, approval of minutes. Diane, I have one change. Under the motion to extend the superintendent's contract, it says Chairman Ferris said he was finalizing the contract language. That was Joe's performance evaluation language. We're not changing his contract. So I just wanted to make that clear. As far as the minutes, anybody have anything else for the minutes? Nick, go ahead.
I was just going to make a comment about the healthy food certification. The first motion, I know the minutes say motion was rejected by a no vote, but it still shows us voting yes. So I think zero to nine would be a better representation of showing a rejection.
How will, yeah, let's take a look at that, right? Yeah, okay, thank you. Dennis?
Motion approved as amended.
Okay, hold on one second. I have to flip my page here. Okay. I have a motion from Dennis to approve. Do I have a second? Jerry, all in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much. Have the consent agenda. As far as the minutes, approval of the warrants. Any question on the warrants at all? No? Okay. We could have done one motion for the whole thing, but that's okay. And Joe, you want to talk about appointments, please? Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis. On the warrants? Okay, go ahead.
I think it's the warrants. There's one that's 15,000, you know, percent over on General 7101. Is that a mistype or is that technology?
Oh, are you looking at
I'm looking at the financial, sorry.
Okay, so not the warrant?
No, the warrant's fine, sorry. I don't think I had a question on warrants. No warrants, fine, sorry.
You good, Dennis?
I'm good on the warrants.
Okay. Joe, notification of appointments?
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm really happy to announce the appointment of, the appointments of two administrators, both up at Central Office. First, both positions will be effective July 1st, 2022. First, I'd like to recognize Sheila Casinelli as Monroe's next assistant superintendent. Sheila has started her career as a classroom teacher in both Greenwich and New Canaan before making the move to be a reading consultant in Fairfield. She filed that by moving into administration as an upper elementary assistant principal in Wilton. But she spent the majority of her career right here in Monroe, where I think she's called home. And she's made that very clear throughout the interview process. For the last 16 years, Sheila came here in 2006 as the Fawn Hollow Elementary School principal. Three years later, she made the move to Central Office, where she is taking the role she has now, which is the Director of Instruction and Professional Development. Sheila runs the professional development, teacher evaluation, curriculum committees. She has been, you know, pretty much our go-to person for the grants, especially the ESER and CRF grants that we've had in the past couple of years. She coordinates a team mentoring program for new certified staff and has worked extensively with our elementary reading teams on professional development and the implementation of Teachers College Reading and Writing Project. So I'd like to congratulate Sheila on this next move.
If I can add into that, I just want to let everyone to know that 30 applications were filed for this position. A committee was formed and met. Six people were interviewed. Three were pulled back for second interviews, and Sheila was picked. So I want to thank everybody from the parents to the staff that sat on that committee two or three nights of that, and a lot of good work. So thank you, committee, for that.
Thanks, Dave. And next, I'd like to recognize Jen Parcell as our next Director of Student Support Services, effective July 1, 2022. Jen has, kind of like myself, come up through the Monroe Public Schools and has spent her entire career in Monroe, starting in 2000, when she started as a special education teacher at Fawn Hollow. She was there for five years before making the move to become a special education teacher at Massey. In 2011, Jen became Massey's first transition counselor, starting our transition program that continues to grow today, that we now have located at the Stevenson Fire Department as well. In 2015, that, I'm sorry, in 2011, she became the transition counselor. In 2015, Jen was recognized as Monroe's Teacher of the Year for her work with the transition program. And then what do you do when you have a good teacher? You get them out of teaching and make them an administrator. Because the next year, in 2016, Jen became the instructional leader for special education, a role that she held until January of 2020, when she became the interim assistant director and has since become the assistant director of special education. So I'm really happy and looking forward to working with both Sheila and Jen. Jen Parcell is our next director.
Congratulations to both of you. We're looking forward to working together. Can I have a motion to approve the warrants and appointments as presented? Nick, I'll take a second from Jerry. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we will go forward to the reports of the committees. Start with our student representatives. Go ahead.
To start it off, sports have been booming this year. Girls' golf won many matches over the break and have been consistently doing well. Along with golf, both baseball and softball brought back away wins from Bethel, and all tennis players have been playing with lots of competitiveness. Boys' lacrosse has been doing well, but girls have been doing especially well with a really good win lead and many 100 points in the season. Final shout-out for our many spring sports is for boys' volleyball, which is doing pretty well, especially their JV. Besides sports, many Massey students will be spending lots of time helping in one way or another with the playground build. However, there are still lots of spots for anyone that wants to volunteer, so whoever wants to be a part of this big-town event, go to monroeplaygroundfoundations.org/volunteer. And of course, an always necessary appreciation for our teachers and staff, but especially during Teacher Appreciation Week this week. The senior trip to Six Flags is on Friday, May 27th, and tickets are being sold this week during all lunch waves. The tickets are $75, and students must have a signed permission slip when buying a ticket, which are available in the office. AP exams began today and will run until Friday, May 13th. And the makeup exams will go from Tuesday, May 17th, until Friday, May 20th. And finally, seniors have their college apparel day to celebrate and recognize their destinations for the next few years today.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any committee reports? Nick?
The Board of Finance met and unanimously passed the budget, which we will vote on tomorrow. There were some adjustments made at the Board of Finance level that were, I call them negotiated cuts, but they were all, you know, above board and things that came in after it left us or after it left the town council. And CES meets on Thursday. It, May is our budget meeting, and so I will report back to the board on what happens on Thursday.
Okay.
At the next meeting.
Pension Committee met, and obviously, the last quarter took a little hit with some of the Russian investments and decided to change managers. So a little adjustment, but we're doing fine maintaining the returns. Still well above expectations.
Okay. Any other reports? While we're on committees, Dennis, you don't have a problem being an alternate for CES, correct, when Nick cannot make it? Is that what we're doing? Okay. All right.
We have reps on CES?
Nick's been going, yeah.
Yep.
Yep. Which is nice, because for the longest time, no one's been able to make those three o'clock meetings, so thank you.
And can I just add one thing, too? I think I said this at one of the last meetings, but myself and a board member from Region 9 did a tour of all the different CES facilities. And the chip has opened it to any board member in any of the towns that CES services. And if any of you have any extra time over the summer, I would highly, highly encourage you. I can definitely contact you with him, but it's very informative to see in person what they're doing there. It's transformative, actually, so I would highly, highly encourage that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move to the report of the superintendent. Joe?
Thank you. We'll start with the review of the March Fund Activity Statement. Ron?
Yeah, so to Joe's point, it's the March Activity Fund Statement. This would have normally been reported last month, but we only have one meeting. So the numbers are a little stale at this point, but let me start off by, Dennis, did you want to ask the question that?
I did have one, but I think it's the IT line item. It's 2,175% over. It seems a little
Yeah, what that, and as we start fine-tuning things over the next couple of months, we'll be doing budget transfers to, that related to an IT purchase for additional teacher laptops that were needed.
Okay, so is it within expectations over time, or we're going to be over no matter what?
In that line item?
Yeah.
We're over on that line. There were actually, the only budgeted funds were in the capital budget that captured a good chunk of those. But that was known.
Then the other expectation is oil and heat, and that's still
Yeah, so oil, we, I think at the last meeting, we moved some money around. We've been looking, you know, we're tracking well in natural gas. Oil and heat lines a little tighter. We'll probably be moving money out of the NAC gas line to cover some of the overages in
Thanks. That's all I had.
Any other questions for Ron? Do you want to
Do the budget transfers?
Yeah, so the budget transfers, I just, I hand it out. Everyone should have a hard copy. It's a six-page transfer. Let me just break it down. It's not, so it's not so overwhelming. There's actually, if you look at the fund activity statement by object code, so if you go back to page 29, the object codes 751111 through 751115, this budget transfer encompasses those five object codes. The first three pages, three and a half pages of the budget transfer are all within object code 751113, which is regular ed certified staff. And it's basically moving, you know, as a result of staff movement over the last, since the budget was prepared. The net impact of this entry is a grand total of $48,347. So it's a lot of movement between accounts. It's not a big impact over the budget. I don't know if anyone has, and you'll be asked to vote on this later.
Go ahead.
So this, so the $48,000 is, usually the transfers net, don't they usually net out to zero?
Well, it nets to zero. The balance to bring all the accounts, to true all the accounts up from a budget perspective was 48,000, which we put into, if you go to page four, line 55 on page four, you'll see the net impact of the 751113 accounts was 101,981. And as a holding account to hold everything, I put it in advanced degrees, because I know that's an amount that was budgeted, that hadn't been spread to all the teachers receiving advanced degrees, if that makes sense. So that's kind of the holding account for the net difference at this point.
But that $48,000 is something that we're going to have to
It's actually, it's actually to our favor right now.
Oh, it's $48,000?
Yes.
Oh, 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 understood. And you're putting it there if you need, got it?
Yes.
It's a minus. Okay, yes. Great.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Joe.
Good. Darlene, want to come on up and do the special update?
Can you hear me? The special education enrollment continues to grow. We have, we didn't have any students with active IEPs move in in the month of April, but we had two students who were dismissed from services and 12 students who were made eligible for services, which brings us to 531 students who receive special education services. I do want to point out that the number of referrals is almost evenly split between K-12. So when you think about, you know, our whole program, K-12 is a big chunk, and then we have our preschool program. Our K-12 program, the number of referrals so far is 21, and our preschool is at 20. So it's almost even. As you know, each year, we do get several referrals from birth to three. And I spoke to the school psychologist today, and, you know, over the last two years, with pandemic and everything that's going on, the referrals from birth to three have doubled to what we're used to in preschool, so. Along that line, you may remember that we used some grant money in January to add a preschool teacher, because our numbers were growing so much. So that preschool teacher is now, at this point, sharing one larger room with another preschool teacher. So we have a significant number of preschoolers in one room with two teachers, and we're trying to keep that. You know, that's the way that we could solve it for right now. We are looking at many options. We're discussing many options for next year. We are going to have to maintain four classrooms. We have, in four separate classrooms, we, and I hate to say it, but possibly a fifth mid-year again next year with the numbers. We get, from the state, we get, like, two or three months in advance what kids are in the birth-to-three program, so that we know that they're coming down the pike. So currently, we have 75 students enrolled in four classes. As we move into the 20- As we move into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we're projecting that our October first number is going to be closer to ninety preschoolers, so. So like I said, we're exploring many options for the best use of space at Monroe Elementary School in order to keep the program housed in the same building due to shared staff. So we all know that when we share staff, it becomes an issue with travel time and, and, you know, how are we going, how are we going to serve the students? I, I do want to, at this time, get right to the bottom line, if, you know, if you already looked at the special ed budget, we, we are still trending positive, so whatever we need to do to help support the preschool program, we will be able to support that financially with, with some of the, you know, savings that we had with students who, again, didn't fully utilize programs this year. So we will be able to cover those expensive, expenses, sorry. The other thing, as we look at the finances, as we come, Ron had said, you know, as the school year become, begins to close, we start looking at open POs and, and what, what are we expecting to spend before the end of the school year? And I did, this month, put some money in holds funds, so you will see that there are some lines that are negative, things like that, those are holds funds, and, and we know that we will have to, I don't know how Ron's going to want to handle that, but we will have to do maybe some transfers in, in that. If you look at page one, outside agencies, we talk about that all year long, that one fluctuates all year long, and there's really nothing we can do about that. That's at a negative right now, it may not stay at a negative. Page, on page two, the professional development line, we're going to take this opportunity, I think I mentioned this last month, to train some teachers in Wilson Program. I have some teachers who are willing to be trained in the Orton Gillingham Program, so we will, we will begin registering them for that. On page five, tuition private, it's a whole, this is where the whole, we paid back the excess costs. We had, remember, I mentioned that we filed in March for the excess cost? We got, we had already gotten a check, and we didn't, you know, not as many kids qualified in March as we had, as we had thought, so we had to pay them back. That's taken out of that line on page five. And on page six, instructional supplies, so along with the trainings that we're going to do, where we do have to buy materials for the teachers to be trained, so that they can, they can go through the training, their kits, and then reading kits, and then the kits for them to be able to service the students once they're trained. And then on page seven, we have devices needed for, as communication devices, for all the incoming preschoolers, so we are going to, you know, while we have a little bit of money, we're, we're going to purchase some of those items. Questions?
Good. Go ahead, Dennis.
Is it even possible to fit four rooms in Monroe?
That's what we've been.
That's what we've been discussing for a couple of months now, yeah.
Potentially. Let's get to four first.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we said, let's get to four first, yeah. We've been having lots of discussions with, you know, the administrative team and, and, you know, the administrator and down at Monroe Elementary, Kelly, and, you know, we're.
It's going to be tight, no matter what.
It's going to be tight, yeah.
And I think, whatever we do, we have to really take a good.
And we did discuss, you know, maybe moving, moving some of the classes to one building and, you know, but it, it really does make it very difficult. We're tight on service providers anyway, related service providers, the speech and language, the occupational therapist, the physical therapist, you know, and if they have to travel, that cuts a lot of time out of their day, so.
Even feasible for a trailer?
Portable classroom? Oh my God, no, please.
It did come up in, it did come up in the conversation.
Ask Trumbull how, how they are.
Security nightmare, so.
Whatever we do this year, I was going to talk about it a little bit with enrollment, because it's really, that's the biggest piece, I, I just, Darlene and I both wanted it, we're going to tag team off for tonight about that enrollment. Whatever we, I, I think we can, you know, we can figure something out for this year. I don't think it's a sustainable, long-term answer, whatever we do, but, you know, we're going to be looking at reclaiming space, or, you know, being very creative with, with some of the space we have in there now. But I don't, you know, I think ultimately, if it continues like this, you know. And it's, it's frustrating, you'll see when we look at the enrollment numbers, that's the one school, that's, the other schools are in a decent spot. And I think we had a bump this year with our, you know, as we kind of had expected that there would be a lot of incoming kindergarteners, you know, this current year. It looks like it's kind of normalizing again next year, so hopefully.
Yeah, so where we had the big bump last year at Fawn Hollow in Stepney, we've got the preschool at Monroe this year, so.
Yeah.
Anything else for Darlene? No?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along, just Celebration of Reading was today, I want to thank the dozens of guest readers that we had that came out to participate. Every kindergarten through grade five class had a special reader sharing their love of literacy with our students, you know, definitely want to acknowledge a few other folks as well. First, our Parents Council volunteers, Kirsten Lindano, Georgette Revron, and Deanna Fonda, they organized the entire day, which was a big task. We haven't, obviously, done this in a few years. And then a huge thank you to the Monroe Rotary Club and Leah Pedina at Turning the Page. Leah gave us a discount on all the books that we purchased for the Celebration of Reading, and the Rotary Club of Monroe generously donated the money to purchase all the books that were read in the classrooms today, so huge thank you to them. Definitely a community effort, so.
Yeah, I was at Monroe L., and it was, it was fun.
It's a lot of fun.
A lot of people.
Fawn Hollow was, too, yeah. In fact, I didn't know who was watching the school district, because everybody seemed to be at Fawn Hollow.
Yeah.
Kids have some interesting questions to ask when they're in there, and some good commentary, too. I just wanted to keep everyone apprised of a couple of dates. The, our annual district retirement celebration at the Water View is on June first at five o'clock. At that, you know, in addition to honoring our retirees, we also recognize the teacher, Teachers' Years of Service milestones, so folks meeting their twentieth, twenty-fifth, thirtieth, so on, years, as well as introducing our Monroe Teacher of the Year, which we're really excited for this year. And then we'll be back at it again on June sixth here, where we will have our traditional get-together, for those of you who remember when we did it live, we kind of meet over in that area of the library, we have some little hors d'oeuvres, and we recognize our retirees and their families before the board meeting, and then they are our exemplary people on, on that evening, we recognize them with the, with our appreciation and the, the traditional pewter plate. Just moving along there, insurance updates, I just want to make sure that everybody was in the, the loop on this. You know, when we did the, when we budgeted for insurance, we budgeted an eight percent increase, and that was based on information, well, actually, that's what we initially, we kind of threw in there as a number, it was one of our budget assumptions. And then in, I think it was January, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, the state comptroller who, which runs the state partnership plan said, hey, you should budget about eight percent, so we felt pretty good about that. Because normally, what happens is, well, I shouldn't say normally, but historically, the last few years, they give us a number, and then it comes in slightly lower than that. Wow, which is always nice, but not the case this year. So we budgeted eight percent, and we know, you know, our two biggest line items are salaries and benefits, and, you know, so we budgeted eight percent, and it came in at ten and a half percent. The Board of Finance, fortunately, we were still in the mode where, you know, this information was able to get to the Board of Finance before they made their, any last changes, and the Board of Finance has put a contingency, contingency line together with allocations for both the town and the Board, because the town is also on the state partnership plan. So, you know, an eight percent to a ten and a half percent increase on insurance is, you know, clearly concerning for us. Any questions on that? And then, we kind of, Darlene just kind of, really just talked about the enrollment updates. So Monroe L. is the big one, right now, we're at about seventy-five kids in the, in the preschool program. Where normally, in years past, we finished the year, Darlene, around maybe sixty? I think we're usually in the, in the fifties, and we come back and start in like the thirties. You know, we're finishing with about seventy-five kids right now. The staff, kind of conservatively estimating right now with kids who are in that, that birth to three pipeline right now, you know, we're thinking we're in the ninety, the ninety student area. So that's the big, that's the, you know, the big change here. You'll see our other schools all have, you know, slightly lower increases, because our kindergarten enrollments are going to be a little bit lower. Even at Monroe L., our kindergarten enrollments appear to be a little bit lower as of right now, but that pre-K number is, is boosting the overall count there. So we have it at four sections right now, like Darlene said, we, likely, if this happens, we'll have to think about moving to a fifth section next year. We already added a section, we're already adding a section next year, because this year's outgoing fifth grade class, we only had forty-seven kids, so they had, you know, two relatively larger classes, but next year, we'll have fifty-eight, so we had to add that third section in for next year. We're watching very closely at Fawn Hollow. We're watching Fawn Hollow really closely, you know, we, we seem to get a little bit of a break here. Now, again, we added a section already at Fawn Hollow for fifth grade, because again, this year, they had four with a hundred and five really, really large classes at Fawn Hollow in fifth grade this year. But next year, that's got to be five sections with a hundred and ten, a hundred and ten kids. So we had already added a section in fifth grade, and when we did the budget, we had added a section in kindergarten, too. We had six this year, we thought we might have six next year, so we might have a possibility there of getting away with just the five, so we're keeping a really close eye on, on that number. And Stepney, we're looking at, you know, remaining, you know, about four-seventy-five to four-sixty-five, so we're going to, we're going to stay even there. Couple of areas that we're really keeping a close eye on, though, is second grade and fifth grade next year, with class sizes of twenty-four, we've had that at Fawn Hollow, but really, you know, trying to keep a close eye on that. And then, I don't, don't really do the averages at the middle school and the high school, just because the courses don't lend themselves to, you know, simple class averages, but looking at a slight decrease at the high school, and right now, about a decrease of about, close to thirty kids at the, at the middle school as well. So overall, the way it stands right now, looks like we could be down, you know, close to fifty kids to start, to start, that would be to start the year next year. So I just, I think the biggest takeaway of all this, though, and Darlene had already talked about it, was the pre-K numbers. That's the piece that, you know, we're really keeping a close eye on, that seems to be really driving up, you know, and it's, and it's creating other issues beyond just, you know, staffing issues, obviously, the space issue that we talked about. Anything that we do is, I think is going to be a Band-Aid to, you know, really taking a really good, hard look at, at space, and doing a facility study to see what we can do the following year, because I don't think it'll be sustainable to keep, keep doing, keep doing this. Okay?
Joe, what was that word you said? A facility study? Didn't we ask for that a few months, months? Didn't that come up a few months ago? And, and we were told that we had them from years past? Yes, Joe, we need a facility study, yes. I don't care when it was done last, it doesn't matter.
I think Alan voted no on that one.
That was because of the population study.
Oh, oh, the population.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to predict the future with that.
I voted no with Alan.
I did, too.
They're never right.
I got my studies wrong.
Is that for the minutes? He's never right?
Any questions for the Superintendent?
I have a quick order. I was remiss, because it was so far, so long ago, April sixth, but there was a curriculum committee meeting. I know it's going to be presented today, but, you know, I went for Jeff, and several, several interesting items were presented, and, you know, we'll hear more about it later, but, you know, it's, it's well, well done by Mr. Lowell.
Okay. Thank you, okay. We'll move on to old business. First one, number A, policy, second review, vote anticipated. Policy five-one, four-five-point-five, sexual harassment, and policy six-one, seven-two-point-six, distance education. Do I have a motion to approve those two policies as presented? Jerry, seconded by Dennis. I'll start the discussion, I know these were language changes and fairly upfront, is there any further discussion on this? None? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Curriculum, second review with a vote anticipated. This is the Revised K-5 Library Learning Commons Curriculum by Jeff Seymour, Secondary Instructional Leader for English, Mary Rowner, Fawn Hollow, Library Media Specialist Kristen Barubi, Monroe Elementary, Stepney, Elementary Library Media Specialist. Do I have a motion to approve the Revised K-5 Library Learning Commons Curriculum as presented?
Motion to approve.
Dennis, seconded by Christine. Any discussion?
It was very well done. I think, I think we, we showed at the last meeting an update perhaps was needed, and I think it, I actually read it a little bit later to digest it a little bit, and it was fascinating to see how much they're doing at younger, younger ages, but it's required in today's day and age, so I think the refresh was needed, and they did a very good job with it.
They did, they did, yep, and it's a good update. Any further discussion? All in favor? Everybody unanimous? Thank you very much. We shall move to new business. A, curriculum, first review of a new course, African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican-Latino Studies. Ian Lowell, Secondary Instructional Leader for History/Social Studies. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Joe, do we have a clicker?
Yeah. I don't know why, it's weird, it's acting really funny, so, can anybody just hit that? That one? I don't know why.
That's what Alan says he's doing.
Wasn't in the bill.
Thank you. So I'm here tonight to present a course that really comes from the state of Connecticut, but that we're excited to offer here at Massey High School as well. It's, it's a one-point-oh credit, a full-year course. The title is a bit of a mouthful, as you can see. Again, this was, this was all created, including the description of the course is all, is all issued to us from the state of Connecticut. But as you'll see, there's, there's some opportunities for us to make it our own as well. But if you read the bolded first line there, "The course is an opportunity for students to explore accomplishments, struggles, intersections, perspectives, and collaborations of African-American, Black, and Puerto Rican-Latino people in the United States." So what's that all mean? Let's see.
Means we need a new clicker.
Yeah. There we go. Awesome, thank you. So it was developed by the State Educational Resource Center, CERC, and it was developed with the input of teachers, students, and experts in the field. So this was not, this was not just, you know, kind of created by some shadow organization of the state of Connecticut, this was created with the input of teachers, again, kids in schools, and experts, historians, college professors, and so on. It is state mandated for this coming school year through Connecticut Public Act nineteen-dash-twelve. We've known about this for several years. Several years ago, I created a course, and, and we created in the, in the history department a course called Diverse Voices in American History, to address some of the content that's present in this course as well. Our course that we created was also a semester course, because we were concerned that maybe students wouldn't be able to take the full-year course, because a lot of our senior electives are in semesters. So we still have the Diverse Voices course, but now, this is the, this is the go-year for, for the state of Connecticut this coming year. Thank you. This is a, a slide directly from the Connecticut State Department of Education, what the course is and is not. You know, it is a full-year history course, it has to be taught in history departments, it's got eleven units of study, it's inquiry-based and, and student-centered in its design, which, you know, definitely meshes with our mission statement here in Monroe. They also talk about mirrors and windows, okay? Mirrors, the idea that students want to see themselves in the curriculum. And as we know, the students of Monroe and students of the United States, and Monroe is no different, are increasingly diverse. And so portraying the history of all, all different Americans is part of the goal of this course. So that's the mirror, seeing yourself in the curriculum, okay? And then also windows, you know, if, if you're not one of the students that's in that, that kind of laundry list of the, of the title of the course, what is, let's, let's understand the history of others. You know, we have an entire world history curriculum based on understanding the history and the perspectives of other people, right? And this is, this is an opportunity for students to gain different perspectives. It is not a course in critical race theory, it is not a separate history, it is not, you know, kind of divorced from all American history. It is not simply, here's a bunch of materials, use these and teach American history instead. And finally, it's not a panacea, it's not going to, you know, create racial harmony in the world, but it is an opportunity for us to represent all people, and really, I think, get closer to the idea of what truly American history is. And I'd like to show you a few examples of, of what we're talking about. Thank you. So here are the. is an opportunity for us to represent all people and really, I think, get closer to the idea of what truly American history is. And I'd like to show you a few examples of, of what we're talking about. Thank you. So here are the six first units. These are the first semester course. The course is split. The first semester is African-American or Black history, and these are the units. And it is chronological, okay? So it starts with, even before the United States, as you can see, 500 BCE to 1600, and it goes all the way up to present day. And they created this chronologically on purpose, because the second semester, the Hispanic/Latino Studies section, is created thematically. So they wanted to make sure that students, if this was the first course they had, they had taken in American history, which likely it would not be at Massey High School, but state's creating it for everybody. They wanted to make sure that kids had a good chronology of events. They understood the progression, okay? And then the second semester, if you could click, Joe, that'd be great. Oh, all right. Well, I'll get to that in a second. Yeah, maybe if you could jump forward. There we go. The second semester, the Puerto Rican/Latino Studies, these are thematic, thematic units. And so now that students have an understanding of chronology, they can go and make connections across time, see change in continuity across time, which is a major historical thinking skill. If we can go back one, that'd be great. Thank you. So one of the things they talked about is identity development. You know, in a traditional United States history course, we, we start with the formation of, of the country and the colonies, and we talk about the American Revolution. And really, the first introduction to African-Americans we have is through the, the horrors of the Middle Passage and the, you know, terrible institution of slavery. This course, in terms of creating an identity, makes a, a specific approach in saying, no, no, let's understand enslaved peoples as peoples first. Who were these people who were, you know, essentially trapped and sent overseas and, and, you know, enslaved? Who were they? Were there, they had, you know, great kingdoms. So we talk about the kingdoms of Mali and of, you know, one of their leaders, this gentleman down here on the right is Mansa Musa. He was considered the richest man in the world at the time. And a lot of Americans, a lot of people in general, just don't understand that there were great empires in Africa before these folks were, were taken across and shipped overseas in enslavement. So it's an important distinction to make for identity, you know? Who were these people before? One of the pieces in the course description talks about students will examine how wars affected the citizenship rights of groups. And so I'd like to give you an example from the Hispanic/Latino side for that. This gentleman here is Dr. Hector Garcia. And if you just indulge me for a moment, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Hector Garcia. So at 15 years old, he was a part of the civilian military training corps. World War II broke out. He went to Europe. He went to North Africa. He served as a medic. He came back in 1946, and as all other veterans, he expected to enjoy the liberties of the GI Bill of Rights, which gave money for housing, for job training, only to find out that he and his other Mexican-American veterans in Corpus Christi, Texas, where he was from, were denied access to the GI Bill of Rights. He found out that they weren't, they weren't allowed to go into medical facilities for their treatments, for their wounds. And so being a doctor, he opened up his own clinic for veterans. And then he opened it up to the rest of the community as well. He created the GI Forum, which was a political action group, really designed to give opportunities for veterans and to, and to mobilize to get those GI Bill of Rights, rights and access for folks. And so he worked with Mexican-American veterans. He worked with Senator, newly-elected Senator Lyndon Baines Johnson, who we all know as a great President of the United States. And he worked with him on a specific case where there was a Hispanic serviceman in Corpus Christi who was denied burial. He had been killed in action in the, in the Philippines. And they had found his body two years after the end of World War II, and they didn't have a place to bury him because the cemetery in Corpus Christi was segregated. And so working with Johnson, he got the opportunity and they, they, they got him a place in a burial in Arlington National Cemetery with full honors. So when we talk about war affecting citizenship rights, and we talk about, you know, American principles of democracy, freedom, and equality, you know, Dr. Hector Garcia really represents all of those things. He fought against segregation and helped our nation live up to its, its goals and ideals. Thank you for bearing with me. How does that link into, well, there are essential questions built throughout this whole, whole course. And so here's one of the essential questions that comes up over in the course, in what ways have African-American, yada, yada, people demonstrated agency in developing organizations and strategies to address pressing issues in their communities? Think about that GI Forum, of which the, the flag is in the, in the background there. That's the GI Forum, and it, you know, was created by Dr. Hector Garcia. That's a good example of that. There was a pilot program that was created for the, for the course this year. Those following schools up there had done the pilot program. As I highlighted in the bottom, Massey did not offer the pilot program. Instead, we offered Diverse Voices in American History. We had over 20 students sign up and take that course this year. We have several students signed up to take this course for next year. In terms of costs, it's already in the 2023 budget. There is a book bundle that is recommended, but not required by the state of Connecticut. The state has agreed to pay for half of the cost of that. And so we, we may or may not purchase all of those books, but we're definitely going to look at getting resources to teach the course, digital resources among others. And there's also some cost, again, already in the budget, but associated with curriculum development. Because although the curriculum is presented, teachers need to make it their own. They need to develop the lesson plans. They need to develop assessments and, and really turn it into a course and not just a curriculum. Thank you. Any questions that I can help offer?
Questions? What books are in the book bundle?
It is a list of over, like, 90 books. A lot of them are more books that the teacher would read for their own background knowledge. Some of them they could use in part or in whole with students. It's, it is linked on the, I would, I wouldn't do any of us a favor if I just started listing all the books there, but there are, there is a list on the syllabus that's linked.
Couple comments.
Sure.
So I think this was a really important law when this was passed. This was a first-in-the-nation law for Connecticut. Connecticut was the first state to mandate a course like this at the local level. I think that it's important for us to even include more of this in some of our general curriculum, although I fully understand there's only so much time and we have to talk about certain things, Abraham Lincoln and Declaration of Independence and stuff like that. But, you know, over the last five to 10 years, there's so many things that I've learned as someone who considers himself to be well-read in different areas of civil rights. There's things I learned in this area that I had no idea about. Juneteenth is now a federal holiday. The Tuskegee Airmen experiments, the Tulsa Race massacre. I mean, there are things that I had no idea about that occurred in our history. And I think that having something like this, this is mandating LEAs to create a course. That's kind of the highest level that the state can take. And I think in this aspect, it's really important. I think this is actually kind of the first of many things like this we'll see. There's a bill in front of the legislature, well, they have two days to do it. We'll see if they do it. But HB 5282 does something very similar for Asian-American and Pacific Islander studies. It's not a course. It just updates the education statutes to include more of that information in the general study. The bill has 89, at the last count, 89 cosponsors, many people from both parties. There was money in the governor's 2021 budget last year that included $360,000 for model K-8 curriculum to be developed in LGBTQ+ studies, Native American studies. And some of those things are being pushed out now, not as mandates, but as model curriculum from the state. Those two things are also first-in-the-nation laws that were passed and funded, most importantly. So I think that this is, this is part of a broader thing that's going on. And I think it's really, really important that we have that. I was, my question was going to be how many students are signed up, but it sounds like there are several signed up.
Yeah. I think, I think at last count, we had about 15 students signed up for the course.
Great. So I just think it's, it's, it's really, really important work. And I hope you come see us more and we get more of these updates. So, thank you.
I agree, Nick. I think a lot, a lot more of these courses are going to come down the pike, as well as the personal finance course that, you know, we've also discussed too. So it's going to be, how do we get all of this in and during the same, you know, school year? So, but, yeah.
Yeah. Before this, they, they had put through a program to mandate the teaching of the Holocaust education.
Right.
And so like there, with that one, and I've, what I'd heard with indigenous peoples as well, was the mandating that it be taught somewhere in the curriculum, but not creating necessarily a course per se.
Separate course, right.
But just asking districts to enter it somewhere in your curriculum.
And that's the, the groups I listed, LGBTQ+, Native American, Asian American, it's in that same statute with the Holocaust and other things. This, this is
A standalone.
Yeah. This is like a, definitely a higher level than any of the other things that are being considered now.
Yeah. Dennis?
I just wanted to say, kudos to you for having a diversity and culture program beforehand, before this mandate. I mean, I'm sure a lot of this was covered in that already. And, you know, that's, that's great. Everybody needs to know about everybody else and how they, how they're raised. So I think it's, it goes a long way, but, you know, you know, I was looking at my comment the other, the other day, it was really, you know, I'm Italian, Irish, Spanish, and German. So none of those were covered in, in the mandate. But, you know, I was like, how far do you go back with Puerto Rico? And, you know, and it's like, they go back to Spain, you know? So it's like, you're going to get that. So it's not just limiting it to that population in a certain period of time. It goes back a broader period of time. So you actually get more culture education.
Thank you, Dennis.
What year is it off, is it offered to freshmen?
This is offered to grade 10 through 12.
Okay.
Pretty much all of the electives in social studies are now open to grades 10 to 12. It is an elective course.
Oh, freshmen used to get one elective, didn't they?
Yeah, they, they do, but typically not in your core subject areas like social studies. Oftentimes, business electives.
Yeah. I was going to say, like, a business, yeah.
Culinary CTE.
Yeah. It was, yeah, those were the choices Christopher got. It wasn't like, yeah, it was in, yeah.
Yeah. We want to get, get their feet on the ground at Massey High School and then start to explore.
Any other questions or comments for Ian? No? Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you.
This will be on our next agenda for second review and vote. All right, moving along to approval of the budget transfers that Ron explained to us. Do I have a motion to approve the budget transfers as requested? A motion by Nick, seconded by Christine. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much. And we're going to move to number C, approval to amend the 21-22 calendar. Joe?
You got it. Steve, if I, if I screw this up, I'll try to give it my best shot. No, I sat in those suits. No. So it's, it's really nice that we're getting back to our, our traditional capstone presentations on May 26th this year. Because all of our teachers are involved in assessing all the presentations, we have traditionally, but we haven't done this in the past, you know, more than two years, we dismiss the freshmen and sophomores early that day. Juniors stay. They get a chance to watch the capstone presentations. It gives them a good flavor of, you know, understanding the project and what to expect, you know, as they, as they get ready to start their, their capstone experience shortly thereafter. So the high school will be looking to adjust their, their day, the calendar that day to a half-day for freshmen and sophomores. They would, they would be dismissed. The juniors and seniors stay. Seniors do their presentation. So we're looking for, to change the calendar for a half-day.
Yes. Yeah. We would be looking to have typically, as we transition back, typically there would also be community judges. We're not going to bring in the community judges this year. We're going to wait till next year to bring that aspect of it back. But we are going to, you know, have the juniors stay. Last year, we did not. We had a couple of, of seniors who were willing to videotape their presentations, and we shared those videos with the juniors, this year seniors. But being in the room and experiencing what the seniors are doing for their capstone presentations is much better for all of the kids. So in order to do that, and then also feed all of the kids, we're asking for an 11 o'clock, so a three-hour early dismissal for Massey for grades nine and 10. Juniors and seniors would stay. The cafeteria will be open for that hour in between before presentations start. Sedexo can do it. I talked to them today. Mike Lawler can do it, of course, but it is going to come at an expense, unfortunately, for the, because it's like adding a run, he says. So, that's the, that's the request.
Discussion, questions? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to amend the 2021-2022 calendar as presented? Jerry, do I have a second? Shannon, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much. You got it, Steve. Thank you.
Two quick side notes, sorry.
Well, that's not fair.
All right. Can I?
Now the dollar amount.
No, 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 no. Most, Jared, no.
You got it.
Just quick, if you're around next Monday night, I'm working with the Massey PTC. We have 45 new families to Massey. We have invited them all in to come in and have dinner at 6 o'clock next Monday night. Hopefully, Mrs. Soper has emailed you an invitation. If not, it's in the, it's in the email. But if you can make it 6 o'clock here at Massey, don't worry, I'm not cooking. But the Massey PTC is, is kind of putting it on to try and allow the numerous families to connect with the school, connect with each other, and connect to the PTC. So if you're around, you're more than welcome to come. If you are going to attend, let us know how many, so we have enough food. And then lastly, just really quick, we did receive our NIESC accreditation letter today. Massey will continue its accreditation, so there'll be more to come on that. But we did receive the letter today, so.
Good, good job. Congratulations.
It's not me, it's the staff, but thank you for that. I will pass that. I did pass it along to them today at the faculty meeting, but, you know, it's really a credit to their work and
Absolutely.
It's a lot of work.
Kind of a segue to that?
It is, yeah.
A segue to your having the open house with STEM. You said some kids have them videotaped? Is a way, is a way of putting them up?
The capstones, you mean?
Capstones, sorry.
Yes, sorry.
Of putting them, putting them up online, so new parents can actually see what they are? Because you had a lot of questions on what that is.
Yeah, we have, yeah. We have the videos from last year, and we can certainly ask all of the seniors this year if they're willing.
Great.
So, sure. Yep.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Mr. Stevens?
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Shannon, all in favor? Aye. Good night, everybody.